Okay, let's call a meeting to order. It's a regular city council meeting of Monday, November 26th, 22nd. Come to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor Gino Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
If you'd all stand for the invocation, we have Pastor John Shelton from the Freedom Missionary Baptist Church.
He's not here.
He's not here. So remain standing for the pledge of allegiance then. Ms. Ratty, would you lead us?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is comments from the public. I have no speaker cards. Anyone want to speak under comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Would you prefer to lead us?
Mr. Smith.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Next, a recommendation to approve minutes, special and regular meetings of November 8th, 2010. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
Would you prefer?
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve the minutes of November 8th in 2010, special and regular meetings. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, announcements and presentations. Proclamation for pancreatic awareness, pancreatic cancer awareness month. And I received an email this afternoon. There was supposed to be a man and her husband were supposed to be here to receive this, but they got snowed in an incline. And I believe the lady is suffering from pancreatic cancer. One of the two in the family is, anyway. Anyway, they're not here, so I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, then they're going to pick it up at another time. Whereas in 2010 in the United States, an estimated 43,140 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer and 36,800 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis. And 75% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% die within the first five years. And whereas there is no cure for pancreatic cancer and there have been no significant improvements in survival rates in the last 40 years. And whereas the federal government invests significantly less money in pancreatic cancer research than it does in any other leading cancer killers. And pancreatic cancer research constitutes only 2% of the National Cancer Institute's federal research funding, a figure far too low given the severity of the disease, its mortality rate, and how little is known about how to arrest it. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the only national patient advocacy organization that serves the pancreatic cancer community by focusing its efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure of pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as to those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November 2010 pancreatic cancer awareness month. So I'll keep this and the folks will be by to pick it up. Okay, next is presentation on the allocation of 2003 HUD grant for the Regional Science and Culture Center. Ms. Cluett.
Good afternoon. Kathy Cluett, for the record. This grant was originally submitted to ask for help in rehabilitating the Brickyard Building down at the end of Pyramid on the U.P. where the Harris Automobile Club cars used to be. And upon further investigation, it came to light that it would cost $20 million just to get it up to snuff for no espetos and to make it for the earthquake preparedness. So that wasn't going to be a good thing to do. So working with Public Works and the Parks and Rec Department, we came up with rehabilitating the trains down on Victorian Square, which everybody's been seeing going on. This is just a very short little few pictures to get people excited to come out to the grand opening, which will be in less than a month. But this is what it started to look like when -- there is fencing now around the entire site, not the green fencing, but real black ornamental fencing. This shows you what was happening on the platform. The lower part of that picture, that's the new treks that's on as opposed to the old wood that was taken off and replaced. And that's what it looks like looking down the car now. That's looking back the other way. So you can see the stairs all look nice. The fencing is going up. That'll keep people out and hopefully nobody will, you know, be going underneath the cars and getting in trouble or getting hurt. The cars were all repainted on the outside. The platform was all repainted underneath, power washed. This is what it looked like. One of the entrances to the club car, between the caboose and the club car, you can see it was falling apart. That's what the outside of the club car was looking like. Somebody, you know, shot some things through the windows. That's what the backside looked like with the rust. That's what that same doorway now. It's been repainted. The treks goes right up to it. There's better fencing on either side, so nobody will fall off the train. And it's all repainted. That's what the roof looked like on the Depot Building where Special Events is. That was the roofing over the platform. And that's the Depot Building. I think it was wise to climb up on top of the train to get an actual picture of the platform roof, but it's the same thing. So just so everybody knows, it's all been replaced. That's that composite material, so that's good for 30, 40 years. So that'll help it. That's one of the entrances to the caboose. That's what it looked like. They took off some of the wood on the top, but that's what it looked like underneath. And that's what it looks like now. There's concrete footing. There's the treks. It's been repainted. Doesn't the caboose look, or doesn't the engine look real happy now? It's all safe. This is not our engine. Engine number eight does belong to the state of Nevada. We did not touch the engine at all in any way, shape, or form. All we did was put the fencing around to make sure that nobody could crawl underneath it and get in trouble. That was the inside of the club car. All of this wood was stripped and revarnished. The carpeting was all replaced. There's two of the guys that was, were busy doing the stripping and the repainting. That was the old carpet and that was the register. It's all just one big long register on the main hallway there to heat it up. That's what it looks like now. It's all recarpeted. It's all been revarnished. All the electrical work has been done. It actually all works. Apparently, all the electric guys that were in there working on it, once they got open the panels and were looking at it, they all wanted to take it home. They were so enthralled with how old this stuff was and they couldn't believe it still worked. And so apparently that was a huge, huge part of the project, was doing the electrical work on the inside. Everything does work now, with the exception of two things. One, there's actually for the rooms that are in this club car, the sleeping compartments, there were actually doorbells. So they don't work. They decided that wasn't really necessary to make that work. And there's some sort of a speaker system, and they weren't quite sure how it hooked up, where it went to, and what it was supposed to be used for. So they didn't want to go in and just take everything out from the wall, so they just left that alone as well. And that's the carpet with the new, those are the old registers. Everything got cleaned up, but this is the new carpet that they put on the floor. And that's the inside of the caboose. It's a nice green color. That's old. That's before they've repainted. And then that's just one little shot of the new green color, and you can tell it just looks so much better and it's cleaned up. So that's just a very short presentation to let everybody know that on December 4th, the museum will be having it open during the Sparks Hometown Parade, so everybody will be able to go through the two cars that got rehabilitated and walk on the platform and basically enjoy it. We're really excited that that got done. Everybody that worked on it was just thrilled.
That's great. Are you having ribbon cutting on the 3rd or not?
The ribbon cutting is on the 3rd at 6 o'clock.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kathy, can you give us an idea of how much money was spent on the project?
It was, the grant was for $241,000, and I think we spent everything but $46.
$241,000?
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Ratty.
It's fabulous.
It is.
People are really excited about it. I've gotten a lot of comments. It is, it is very, very exciting, actually.
So now that we've got the engine fenced in, how does the state ever get it back if they want it?
That's a very, very interesting question.
Maybe they'll take it out with a helicopter.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not, I guess I understood from Chris Cobb that they brought it in on a train, or a truck, and somehow got it over from the tracks. I don't know how they're going to get it out.
Thanks, Kathy. Looks good.
Thank you.
Okay, next is consent items 5.1 through 5.6. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Smith?
I'll pull 5.5, please.
Anyone else? Not looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.6 minus 5.5.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
It's been moved, moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve consent items 5.1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 5.5, Mr. Smith?
I wanted to pull that because it is, it's 25 homes, I believe, up on top of DeAndrea. And I just, the question I had was, will it be included in the DeAndrea HOA, the current one, or how's it going to be set up?
The answer is that yes, the, all homes and what we refer to as Phase 3 will be part of the Greater DeAndrea Homeowners Association. However, at the same time, the developer of the property is in the process, or might have already created, a sub-association that will exist kind of underneath the broader umbrella of the HOA, very similar to what was done at Toscana, where there is a sub-association at Toscana that participates in both, but, you know, they have some issues that are unique to that portion of the development, and so I think the developer sees the same type of setup going forward here. So this, the guard of final map with its 25, creating 25 lots is a piece of that.
Okay, and then my next question would be, is there anybody here from DeAndrea that would like to talk about this, or?
I think we have.
Come on down, sir. Just give your name for the record and then go ahead.
Sure. My name's Tim Scheiderman with Lennar. I do have one clarification.
Please do.
I may have misled Tim. DeAndrea Phase 3 has its own separate HOA outside of DeAndrea Phases 1 and 2, and that was set up three years ago, I believe.
See, I'm not, I'm not quite sure that's, that's true, because the, the whole DeAndrea section is under one.
It's under that same handbook, and we do follow the handbook.
But how about the criteria that's in there for the existing homes? I mean, are you?
That's in the handbook as well.
Okay.
It's just, it's, and I don't know the whole history on why the separate HOA was formed, but we still have to follow the handbook.
Yeah, a lot of money you have to buy by what's in the handbook.
Correct.
So you won't be coming forth with a new handbook?
That is correct.
Okay, so, and but you're representing the homeowner, or the builder, not the?
The developer, yes.
And I was asking if there's anybody here that objected to it from the homeowners association, and there's nobody here, so.
I'm sorry.
You're okay, so I'm okay with that. Okay? I'll make a motion to approve consent item 5.5. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve agenda item 5.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Whoops. Let me do that again. Please vote. Got a little whip in the trigger there. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Airport Advisory Board of Patrick Zelke. And I believe Mr. Zelke's here, if anybody wants to ask him any questions. Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Kerrigan. I'm sorry, Ms. Ratty.
Oh, no, that's not him. Would you prefer, Mr. Zelke, to make appointments in there? What do you have to say?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve Edward, or Patrick Zelke as the advisory, Airport Noise Advisory Panel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Zelke, you're all set. You can stick around if you'd like to, or you're free to go. Thank you. Thanks for volunteering, by the way. I appreciate it.
Well, I think it will be.
It will be. 6.2, consideration and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled. This is a reappointment of Yvonne Flynn. This would be her second term, I believe, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, any questions about Yvonne Flynn? If not, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith? Moved to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan, to approve Yvonne Flynn as the Sparks Advisory Committee for the Disabled. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Next is 6.3, consideration and possible appointment of Neil Crutts to the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission has several ex-officio members who must be from the City of Sparks and be the Public Works Director or is designee. And at this time, I would place before the city council a recommendation that we appoint Mr. Neil Crutts to this position.
Motion? Mr. Kerrigan?
Moved to approve Neil Crutts to the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve Neil Crutts to the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.4, presentation, discussion, and possible direction or approval of federal, state, and local legislative affairs issues. Ms. Cluett, Mr. Driscoll, round up the usual suspects.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record again, Kathy Cluett, Governor Affairs Coordinator, and Mr. Driscoll, Assistant City Manager. And before we go on, I was completely remiss in not saying a huge thank you to Chris Cobb and Rick Darby for the train project. It absolutely would not have happened, especially without Mr. Darby. Before you, you have the staff report, your normal monthly update, and a few items that are on here we do need to discuss and have some action on them. The first one being the Sparks 2011 Legislative Bill Draft Request. In previous action, the council voted to use our one BDR placeholder in case the ballot question passed, and the ballot question did not pass, so we're coming back before you to make sure that you don't want to go forward with that ballot, with that BDR request, and I will call the LCB tomorrow if that's your desire, and pull that off the list.
I think.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It was formal action. You took formal action to do the BDR. If you could vote, it would be helpful.
Okay, need a motion to, Ms. Ratty?
Would you ask the staff to withdraw the BDR?
Have a second? Question, Mr. Kerrigan?
Okay, you're saying we can't change this, right? Isn't that what you said?
Correct.
And the reason for it is, because I looked that up, but I couldn't find anywhere in NRS that said we can't change our bill draft request. We get one. And so it's like, I guess we just bet on the pass line and lost?
Unless you, unless you had something that could be done within that topic, you end up losing that one.
And we're, can you, I mean, I don't dispute this, but I couldn't find it, so where does, where is this written?
I'd have to look it up for you, because I don't remember. You know the topic well, because it comes up every session, and things get pulled because they get tweaked and they're outside the realm, and so we've always been very conservative with that. We do know, at least at one point, there is a chair of one of the Senate committees that has reached out and let us know that depending on the topic, if it was something to do with government affairs, that he was in line with, and he would be happy to take on one since, you know.
Oh, yeah, I know that. I mean, we could always find somebody, but I'm just saying, I couldn't find where it said that we couldn't change the title, or, you know, the bill dress, since we only have one.
Yeah. I'll do the research and give that information to the council.
Thanks. Just shoot me an email, because I couldn't find it.
Further questions? Mr. Smith?
I just second the motion.
It's been moved, we'll do it then for discussion. It's been moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve.
Excuse me?
Julia.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith, to remove the BDR. And there's been, there was some sketch. Mr. Schmidt, did you have something?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I think that you quoted some statutes, I believe, when you first presented this, and council was given the choice, and knowing fully well that if we chose that vote, we would not have another option several months ago. That was our very clear direction of the council, that, you know, this one didn't pass, that's it. We just threw the BDR out the window.
Mr. Schmidt, Steve Driscoll for the record. Clearly, the council could choose to pursue what they had and would have to just tweak the language. You wouldn't have a vote to back it up, which is usually what it would take. Also, that if you were in sales taxation area and were looking to do something else, our BDR probably could be tweaked within reason from that standpoint. But you are correct in your, in your memory of the discussion, that we did know that if, if it was not successful, and that if we needed to do something else, we'd have to go find a sponsor, and that this BDR, for all intents and purposes, would be gone to us because it, we had not met the deadline of August 31st.
Has.
You're going to look it up, then?
Oh, I'll look it up.
Has NLC issued all of their BDRs?
Not, not that I know of. They were, they were light on their topics this year.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Ratty?
I guess my question is, is there any urgency if we did it after our next council meeting and gave you time to see if there's a loophole you can find for us? So, any urgency? I believe the next big date is December 15th. That is the last date technically for legislators to submit anything. And do you have any pros or cons to leaving it out there? I mean, I'm assuming that everybody's looking at it, is it's?
You have, you have a meeting on the 13th. You can take action, and we can make that 15th date.
Okay. I'll give that, I'll withdraw my motion, and give staff until the next meeting to see, cite to us where, where the changes, where it says that we can't make those changes.
Okay, Mr. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, we're not, I don't personally am the city council, but we're not going to pursue the, the sales tax, because the people said no. But I don't want to get rid of that if we don't have to, because we may find something else. So the way I, like I said, I don't dispute it, I just couldn't find it, and I wanted to make sure that it's just a, it's a placeholder for us, and I don't see any problem with changing, you know, changing in midstream. I don't, as long as we hit the deadline. But, so, I appreciate Julia pulling that off, because, you know, if you can find it, fine, and then I'll shut up. If you can't, then we'll, we'll be back in action.
We'll do, we'll do the work with the LCB and get the information for us and go forward.
Okay, go ahead.
The other real action item is the federal fiscal year 12 appropriation request. I'm sure everybody's read the newspapers, and absolutely nobody knows what's going to be going on back east with the appropriations. They still haven't done anything for the federal fiscal year 11, so we're still up in the air with our requests that are currently outstanding. We're before you, just to make sure that we have something to run with if and, if and when it does come up for federal fiscal year 12. All department heads were contacted, and they didn't have any new ideas on, you know, different projects to come forward through. So we're looking for guidance from the council on what kinds of projects you would like to do. We've always asked for money for the Pyramid Highway. We've historically asked money for Larry D. Johnson to help us try to finish that, and then other smaller requests. And we do not ask specifically for the quest, requests for flood. We just do a sign-on letter, so that's your pleasure.
All right, questions? Go ahead, Julia.
Do you have the list from the last session? Of what we asked for federal 11? Yes. Because my recollection is we had some very good discussion about that list. We spent a good chunk of time on it, and my guess is that we didn't get it all. All right, no, we didn't get it all, so I'd like to just consider moving forward with what we've done in the past. Right. We asked for more money from Larry D. Johnson, and we didn't get any markup for it. We did ask for Pyramid Highway. We did get marking for that. We asked for Truckee Meadows, for Tom Wharf, the facility, and we didn't get a markup for that. And. And the Tom Wharf, was that for the Green Energy Project? It would have been on top of that, and we, we still have funding from, two years ago, from '08, that we're in the process of still trying to spend. Okay. And we asked for the Sparks Rail Yard, and we did get an appropriation report for that. It hasn't been finalized. Okay. And those were the ones that actually went forward. And on the two that we did get something, did we get the full amount, or did we get a portion? We never get the full amount, unfortunately. The Sparks Rail Yard, we asked for $2 million, we got $100,000. Pyramid Highway, I don't think I have that sheet right on me, but we didn't, we asked for $8 million, and we didn't get that. And Larry D. Johnson, we didn't get any markup. I still think that Larry D. Johnson, the rail yard, make a lot of sense, as does Tom Wharf. I would defer to Councilman Smith for some guidance on Pyramid, if that still makes sense to stay on our list.
What is the money for? Is it for the EIS? That's not what it's for. What is it for?
For what part? For Tom Wharf?
No, for Pyramid.
It's, it's interesting, the way the money comes out, it's, we ask for it, and it is ours, but we are working with RTC on it, so we help them.
Okay, that's what that's for. Because I know they're working on the EIS for the, for the intersection and for the 395 connector.
Correct.
But they're at the same time, I think.
Correct.
So it's all money that can be used.
Yes.
Okay. Is that it, Julia? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, Kathy, I want to just make sure you understand exactly where we're at. We haven't received anything so far. They put in earmarks, but we're on continuing resolution right now.
Correct.
Which means that, no funding at all for that.
Correct.
So they would have to go ahead and fund the budget with the earmarks in for us to even get what little they put in there.
Correct.
Which is highly unlikely at this point.
I hate to say correct, but correct.
Okay, anyone else? Any direction? Go ahead, Julia.
I'd make a motion that we move forward with the same projects, understanding the environment that we're in, but with the spirit that Miss Clip on forward, that we're ready if the environment changes.
Have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith, to move forward with the projects we've had in the past.
With the same amounts?
Yeah.
All right.
And I would agree with that. We'd probably need to have something ready in case there's a miracle, or somebody has an epiphany back there, or whatever, so...
It's only going to be on one side of the aisle if they happen to differ.
Exactly.
Well, again, Steve Driscoll for the record, every once in a while, some of these smaller projects, there is money from one of the representatives that maybe falls out from something else, and we've received small amounts in the last couple of... Not last year, but a couple of years before. So, having the list available and ready, and especially knowing where there's phases, that's always really helpful for us, because, you know, we work with the local staff, and if they can help us, they do.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kathy, I just want to go ahead. You're looking for requests for the '12 budget?
Correct.
And when do those due?
We have to have that back east by January. They actually start it in February, if they follow the same procedure. Normal.
Okay. Thank you.
Here is a motion on the floor that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, kids. Appreciate it. Okay, 6.5, consideration and election of a mayor pro tempore pursuant to Article Number Three of the Spark City Charter. Okay, discussion. I think I brought this up at the retreat, that, and then, having said that, found out that we do have to vote on a new mayor pro temp, each, after every election, so... And I asked if there was anyone that was interested, and I think Mr. Smith said he was interested, so... Questions? Motions? Mr. Carrigan?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we elect Ron Smith as mayor pro temp.
Have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve Ron Smith as the new mayor pro temp. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, 6.6, consideration possible bill number 2627, an ordinance to city council to add authorization of city room tax. Jeff, do you want to go over 66...
Yeah, all four of them.
67, 68, 69, and then we'll vote on them individually?
There's a lot of interchanging, yeah.
Is that all right with the council? Okay, go for it.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. Jeff Kronk, Finance Director, for the record. What I've got before you... Excuse me. What I've got before you is four different ordinances that we brought before you as a bond sale resolution at our last council meeting, and two weeks ago, this probably would have been a slam dunk, but there's been a lot of market volatility, as I had updated my staff report.
I don't think it would have been a slam dunk for good.
Well, on the... Just doing the deals, it would have been a slam dunk.
Oh, on the deal side.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But there is some market volatility that adds to the complexity. So I appreciate having to go through, you know, taking all four of these at once, because there is some interchangeable parts here. The first one, I wanted to put specifically first, because this drives, depending what you want to do here, will drive the other, to some degree. We have this first one, a bond ordinance, which would essentially pledge our room tax revenues for the projects that we discussed in the redevelopment agency meeting and the retreat, and so on and so forth. The question would be, do you want to proceed with this funding? Now, let me tell you, from an update on, from the market standpoint, this is on life support. There's not a lot of interest. There never was a lot of interest in this. We beat the bushes, so to speak. I think that's how I said, put it before. Couldn't find a whole lot of activity, and as of late Friday, very late Friday afternoon, we've received basically one bid, and the one who's actually had expressed interest had pulled their bid. And the one that did express interest put a stipulation on it, saying that, yeah, we'll proceed with this, but we want an additional backing, or pledge, if you will, of C-tax revenues. So, I wouldn't recommend that, but that is what their bid came in at. And again, the other institution that we were pursuing actually pulled their bid altogether. That's not entirely dead. Like I said, this doesn't necessarily kill this, but it does put it on life support. We can still pursue with the agency that put a bid in and worked with them, you know, we can still work with them. It doesn't necessarily kill it, but it is kind of difficult right now. So, what this ordinance would do, if you approve it, gives me the authority to go ahead and continue working with them and arrange an actual sale with them in a facility, a financial facility, that would make sense. But you would have to approve this to say, yes, we want to proceed with pledging the room tax revenues for this funding purpose. So that's the first 6.6.
So that come back to us again, then, for final approval?
No.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Well, actually, not necessarily. Depending on the deal we make with the institution as it stands right now, probably not, but I probably would qualify that, just the way the market's going, and I might have to come back with you. But what I know right now, this would be the final approval.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Why would we want to bond for the future revenue?
Well, originally, other than just to finance any project, you know, that we may be willing to pursue, the other reason was to protect that revenue stream from state capture. The problem with that is if we have to, if we go with the current bid that we receive from this one financial institution of, yes, we'll do it, but we have to pledge additional revenues, that in essence makes it a GO pledge, a general obligation pledge of the city, and that would lose that protection. That protection would be gone. So, that in essence would kill that. And as of right now, I don't have a deal on the table to protect those revenues. I would have to work on it, and I'm not saying it's not an impossibility, but what I have right now, it's not there.
I guess the question is, at what price do we pay for protecting those revenues? Because we were looking at $235,000 annually.
Right. That pretty much wouldn't change?
Stay the same.
That would stay the same?
This 6.6 does not include the consolidation of everything we have out there now. It does?
Consolidation of...
Of all the bonds we have out there now?
It would, with a potential of 6.9, and that's the only other one I wanted to bring into this situation, because, like I said, the deal with the other financial institution that dropped their bid, that's not a done deal, but we still may be able to get that done if we refunded the C-tax bonds that we currently have, which is 6.9 on your agenda. The only problem with that, if I would do that individually, if I just bring it to you individually as a refunding, it doesn't make financial sense to really do that. There isn't any savings. It's pretty much a break-even kind of a deal.
So 6.6 is basically the whole package, including going out and getting that revenue source?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
That's all included?
Yes.
Now, 6.9 would be included in 6.6, basically?
Possibly.
Okay.
Possibly. And that's why, I mean, it's... I'm sorry to be vague like that, but that's kind of what we're dealing with right now. It's kind of a vague time, but what I can tell you is, you can vote on 6.6 alone. Let's say if you approve that, I mean, of course, you're going to vote on it alone. It's a standalone item, but you can approve it, stand by itself, but right now, I don't have a deal on the table for a standalone to make this happen. I would have to probably couple that with 6.9, which is a refunding of the C-tax, at least based upon what I know right now. But, again, if you do approve this right now, you're basically giving me authority to go make that deal work. And it may include 6.9, and it may not. That's kind of what we're dealing with right now.
Okay. Ms. Ratty?
The part I'm not quite understanding yet is, if we approve it and we give you authority to go make, is it just the deal, meaning only with the one bid that's on the table, or would you still be looking for other possible deals?
I would still be looking, absolutely.
And so, is there a way for us to do this, where we say, we would like you to continue to pursue a deal, but only one that isn't backed by general obligation or C-tax?
With that motion?
And is...
That sounds like a motion, yeah. Absolutely.
So, I don't want to shut up discussion, but we're not limiting... Just wanted to make clear, you're not limited to that one bid.
Correct.
You would be continuing to look, and if you couldn't find anything with those stipulations, then you wouldn't do it.
Yeah, and I would represent to you, if that's what I'm bringing to you, I actually would recommend not pursuing that, because I think the general obligation pledge at this point is not a wise...
Doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, it's not a wise thing to do. You would still, you'd be able to raise the funds for the project, but you would lose that, the protection that we were mentioning here. So, I mean, I wouldn't recommend that, but that is an option on the table, so you could make that into your motion to, say, pursue another type of a deal, or, you know, some other than what's on the table.
We'll see if there's more discussion in them. I'd be prepared to make that.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes, Jeff. If we essentially suspended this proceeding today and took it up in, say, January, after you've been through the holiday season, where the bond market is traditionally kind of restrictive, would we be better to restart this process again, and better go out to a bid with our parameters being very clear?
Yes and no. How's that for an answer? We might do that anyway. When... Yeah. No, I'm not running for office. If we approve the ordinance as they stand right now, we could sit on them, so to speak, and, for example, 6.7 and 6.8 are strictly refundings. That's, we put that forward, because two weeks ago, they actually would make a lot of sense, but, like I said, there's been a lot of volatility in the market. I could sit on that for four to six weeks, as it stands right now, without having to do anything else. If the market stayed volatile, and the interest rates stayed high, so on and so forth, this would pretty much fall off the table anyway, in the first, second week of January, and then I would have to come back to the council at that time and start the process again. Or, if we approved the bond proceeds, or the bond ordinance as they stand, I could act quickly, and that actually gives us an opportunity, because the market is so volatile, we're already into the process, and I can move much more quickly with an approval today than having to start the process over again, because I always have to come back. If I were to start the process again, I would have to come back with a bond sale resolution, wait two weeks, and then have another ordinance, very similar to what we did here today. This at least would give me an opportunity to move much more quickly if rates drop, and they've really been volatile. So, you know, one day to the next has been kind of crazy, so...
So, between yes and no, your recommendation is that you continue on?
My recommendation would be for 66 and 69, treat it based on the room tax, what you want to do about pledging and going after the room tax revenue. 67 and 68, I would recommend approving the bond ordinance today. That gives me the opportunity to pursue those bond refundings and possibly save some money. If interest rates stay up, I wouldn't do it, and the deal would just die. It would just die on the vine, so to speak, and then we could bring it up at the end of the year, or after the end of this calendar year.
Is that it, Sean?
Yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, like I said before, I just, I don't think it's a good time to go into more debt. And now you're even making my point stronger. There's no problem, I have no problem with 67 and 68, because that's a refund, and that's going to save us money, save the taxpayers money. I have no problem with that. This other one's a crapshoot. I didn't like it two weeks ago, and I like it even less now, so...
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, if I could just recap, 6.6, rough numbers. We have $550,000 a year coming in. We're going to pledge that money for 12 years, 13 years, and we're going to get $1.8 million present value to do that.
Correct.
That's a good deal for somebody.
More or less.
It's a good deal for somebody.
Mm-hmm.
Just as another comment, CNBC had a pretty extensive thing today on municipal bonds, and as we know, municipal bonds, the way it is today, is probably dead. It's taken a beating all over the country, and chances of municipal bonds being, going up forward after the first year is next to none, so...
Well, maybe, if I can follow up on that. The reason the volatility has really, well, there's a few reasons. There's actually several reasons why the volatility has spiked over the last really The feds recently moved to do a quantitative easing, round two, if you will, and they're basically buying up bonds in order to drive interest rates down. That's sparked some confusion in the market, I think, and it may have had actually the opposite effect. We'll see. You know, again, that's just kind of a temporary, you know, maybe knee-jerk reaction. We'll have to see if that's over the next year. There's also, right now, as Sean had mentioned, right now, there's a lot of supply in the pipeline of municipal bond activity, which will probably clear up after the first of the year. The Build America Bonds has been, has a December 30th deadline, and unless the Congress extends that deadline and creates another opportunity for that to continue, that's scheduled to end. And there's a lot of bonds in the pipeline that are being floated around under that umbrella, significantly California, you know, and since they're so close to us, you know, regionally speaking, there's a lot of speculation right now, again, which is adding to the volatility, that they'll go default on their bonds. And, of course, we all know, if California goes default, well, every municipality must have to go default. So, I mean, I'm being facetious, but I mean, that's kind of how, what causes the fear. So, will that subside after the first of the year? Possibly. But, you know, again, it's just like everything else. What's the stock market going to do? Well, it's going to go up or down. Yeah.
I always thought...
About 100% of the time, right? So...
I always thought QE2 was a cruise ship. Now, I know we're cruising on a whole different ballgame now. Thank you.
Mr. Smith? Just to be clear, and I agree with these guys, I don't know if this is a good deal or not, but the payment wouldn't be $550,000 a year. That's our revenue.
That's the total revenue, correct.
The payment is $235,000 with not exceeding the amount of $2.2 million, and you're going to get $1.8 to $2 million out of that.
Correct.
So, it's not that...
Yeah, well, we would do, we would pledge the entire revenue source.
You're doing 2.5 times the coverage.
Yes, exactly, yeah. And that's where the protection would be, if we could make it happen that way, but, you know, we just have one right now.
You know, I agree with just about everything that's said. This is not a good deal. Under normal circumstances, I would not be doing business like this, but this is not normal circumstances. By not pledging this, we may just lose it all. Not that we want to, but it could definitely go south to Carson City, very simply. So, this is a poor way to do business, and I've said this many times on other boards, that we talked about doing something to commit revenues so they're not swept by the state. Poor way to do business, and it's a shame that we even have to be talking about doing something like this today in the normal course of business, but that's my concern. I don't think it's a good deal. I really don't think it's going to happen anyway, even if we approve it.
It may not.
Yeah.
Yeah, it may not.
But, we're looking, let's not forget why this thing came up in the first place. We're looking to protect revenues, not looking to do stupid debt, so... Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah. That being said, I don't think we should be running scared of making bad business decisions because somebody has the potential of taking our money. Because if, like Ron Schmidt said, we get 550 annually, we're going to tie that up for 12 years. Multiply 550 times 12, that's $6 million, $7 million. So we're going to tie up $7 million for two because we're afraid somebody's going to come and get it. If they, you know, if Carson City wants it, seriously, they could, you know, what are we going to do about it? I learned a long time ago that if they don't have a law, that they'll, they'll make one. So, you know, they'll, you know, if they want it, they can come and get it. I just think it's bad business, and I just think it's a disservice to our citizens, so.
Ms. Ratty.
I have a question to ask.
Okay, good. So anything else for the good of these four items, Jeff, or?
I'm just looking for your direction.
Okay, Ms. Ratty.
Would you just quickly go over, I believe that I understand the first three, but talk to me about the fourth one, 6.9 again?
Sure, absolutely. Well, it's very similar to the, to the second and third one. It's a refunding, which basically is just a refinancing. So in a normal situation, you would do these if the interest rates drop, and you would be saving money on that. In this case, the interest rates that we currently have are pretty close to what they would be if we would refund this. What 6.9, how that's different is that we have a financial institution that we were working with who is interested in doing the room tax bonds, but they currently hold our consolidated tax bonds. And they said, well, we may have capacity for your room tax bonds if we got rid of the consolidated tax bonds. So we had to refund those, or we would have to refund those, and they would subsequently be interested in taking on the new issuance of the room tax funds.
Okay. So you're saying you couldn't do 6.9 without 6.6?
No, because since then, they've taken their bid off the table.
Okay. I'm trying to see why those two are intrinsically linked, because you said you would support 6.7 and 6.8, but you didn't think it made sense to move forward with 6.6 and 6.9?
Right. The only reason I'm keeping that, I would keep that on, is if you'd give me direction to continue to pursue them, because they were, up till Friday, they were the only ones who were interested in that deal. So, you know, I could still go back to them and still try to work that out to see if they've taken it off completely, or if I say, you know, hey, our council is still interested in pursuing this, would you be willing to still give us your original, as you were, as we were originally pursuing it, and take on the room tax if we refunded the C tax? It's basically, it would be at this point asking for approval to continue that dialogue.
Okay. I guess the point that I'd like to make, I understand it's not a great deal, but I also have faith in my finance director.
Well, that's good to hear, thank you.
That you would only make a deal that made sense for the city, and that, you know, certainly wasn't general obligation, certainly only secured the dollars, and really did pencil. So I'm comfortable in giving you the flexibility to not so much go back to that funder, but to look and see if there's anything out there, to sit on it for three weeks and see what happens after the end of the year. I'm comfortable with doing that.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on then to 6.6. Any discussion on 6.6, or else looking for a motion? Anyone want to make a motion? Okay, 6.7. Consideration possible approval of Bill Number 2628, an ordinance of City Council, Spark Nevada, providing for issuance of City General Obligation Bonds, sewer refunding bonds. And this is the one that'll save us about 150, Jeff?
Well, as of today, not as much. As of Friday, it was significantly higher. That's, again, the volatility that we're seeing.
But it could come back to being higher again.
Again, I would recommend approval on this one, and give me an opportunity to act quickly, at least within the next, you know, like I said, maybe the first week of January is about, and the reason this is, it's more of a technicality, since these were, would be labeled 2010 issuances, we would have to come back and at least have another ordinance to start that process. So I would be looking for just some time on this one for approval.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, since these are refunding, to approve the 2010 sewer refunding bond ordinance, and to act as quickly as you can. And then once again, it's, you know, with clarity, saying if it saves us money. And I know that's what you wanted to do.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve Agenda Item 6.7, Bill Number 2628. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is 6.8. Consideration possible approval of Bill Number 2629. Any questions on 2629? Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, I'll make the same motion to approve the 2010 medium-term refunding bond ordinance with the same caveat that we had on the last one.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 6.8, Bill Number 2629. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Whoops. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.9. Consideration possible approval of Bill Number 2630. Any discussion on 26, Bill Number 2630? Mr. Carrigan. Oops, go ahead.
Jeff, this is the one, I think we can go ahead and approve this because we don't have the 6.6 to worry about. This is just going to be a refunding, right? If you can get it for a lower percentage?
That's correct. I would say the possibility of this happening by itself is pretty low.
Okay.
But absolutely. Anything is possible.
Okay, well, I'll make the same, yeah, I'll make the motion then to approve 2010's consolidated tax revenue refunding bond ordinance. With the same caveat.
Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ratty, seconds. Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve Agenda Item 6.9, Bill Number 2630. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll move on to public hearing, second reading and public hearing of Bill Number 2625, repealing Section 12.24.070, firearms prohibited exceptions of the Sparks Municipal Code and providing other matters properly related thereto. Mr. Adams.
Currently, currently Sparks ordinances prohibit the carrying of firearms in municipal parks. I received an email from one of our constituents indicating that it was believed that our ordinance conflicted with Nevada law. We researched it, and sure enough, the Nevada Legislature has retained the power to regulate firearms in the state of Nevada. So in that respect, our ordinance conflicts with Nevada law, and that's the reason for the instant agenda item before you.
Questions for Chet? No questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Questions? Mr. Lawson?
I'd like to move that Bill Number 2625, Norris repealing SNC 12.24.070, be approved and adopted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve Agenda Item 7.1, Bill Number 2625. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Next is 7.2. Second reading and public hearing of Bill Number 2626, amending the Sparks Municipal Code relating to alcoholic beverages, requiring all persons who sell or serve alcoholic beverages to be 18 years of age or older, eliminating the requirement that alcoholic beverage servers employed by an on-premises licensee obtain a work permit. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proposed ordinance is a comprehensive revision of the city's laws pertaining to alcoholic beverages. It affects almost all aspects of licensing, from application to expiration and revocation. Now, the changes that are being proposed actually reflect city practices of the various city departments. They're also intended to eliminate unnecessary issuance of work permits and to clarify ambiguities that blur the licensee roles of the Revenue Division and the investigative role of the Police Department. And we've attached a five-page summary of the ordinance provisions as well.
Mr. Smith.
I just want to be clear that I read that a grocery checker can sell alcohol.
Grocery checker can sell alcohol if, yeah, if they're, if they're a minor, we-
If they're 17 years old and checking, they can, they can sell.
They can do that. As long as they're under the supervision and the adult supervision of their store manager at all times.
That's questionable.
At one store, I know. Get them out of their office.
Yeah. At one store, and I know, especially.
You're welcome, sir.
Questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Any questions? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for approval of Bill Number 2626?
Yes. Do you have a second? Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve 7.2, Bill Number 2626. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Moving on to planning and zoning, 8.1. Second reading, public hearing, consideration and possible approval of Bill Number 2624, regional road impact fees. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, city council members. For the record, Tim Thompson, senior planner. Before you today is a code amendment request to change Chapter 12.44 of the Sparks Municipal Code to update the impact fee section for the RTC Regional Road Impact Fee Program. The, the fees were last updated two years ago. Many of you may recall that at that point in time, there was a five-year phase-in plan that was implemented. There was a substantial increase in the fees and the creation of that five-year phase-in. Right now, we're in year two of the phase-in plan. What this amendment actually proposes to do is to, to stop that phase-in plan and basically stabilize the fees, as I've been telling folks. There are also some, some changes to the general administrative manual. These changes were approved by the RTC Board back on September 17th. And staffs had the opportunity to go through this, and we don't see any significant issues, and would recommend that you, the city council, approve or adopt the ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open this to the public. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Any questions? Of staff? Okay, if not, looking for a motion?
Okay.
Mr. Smith.
Okay, I move to approve Bill Number 2624, Regional Road Impact Fees and Ordinance Amending Chapter 12.44 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to approve Agenda Item 8.1, Bill Number 2624. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 3 to 1. Mr. Schmidt, is a no. Okay, 8.2 is a public hearing item. Public hearing discussion and possible action on PCN 10023, a tentative map request for 110-lot residential subdivision on a site approximately, on a site approximately 21.52 acres in size in the NUD zoning district located in Village 38 of Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Tim Thompson, senior planner, for the record. This is a tentative map request from CAV Investments LLC for a 110-lot, single-family residential subdivision. It would be located in the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, just to the southeast of the intersection of Pyramid Highway and Sparks Boulevard. The site is approximately 21 and 1/2 acres in size, again, 110-lot residential subdivision. The proposed layout, this is oriented north and south. This would be Sparks Boulevard here on the left-hand side of the screen. The couple, or couple issues to discuss, staff doesn't believe they're significant. The first is the applicant proposing to use rolled curb in the subdivision. And then the second is the removal of some of the parkway landscaping along some of the streets. In the original development plan, it was anticipated that this roadway would basically bisect this particular subdivision. As you can see now, it actually comes down and then dead-ends into the cul-de-sac, and then there's the two access points here on the southern portion of the development. So based on that, and staff didn't really see a need for the residential streets to have the parkway strips, that allowed the developer to shrink down the width of the street a little bit and, and give us the density there. There's a minimum density requirement of 6.7 dwelling units per acre on the site, and in doing that, it got us right to that minimum density. Beyond that, staff didn't identify any significant issues or concerns, and we recommend that you approve the tentative map request.
Questions for Tim? Mr. Schmidt.
Tim, is this, wasn't this piece of property part of the Kylie Ranch bankruptcy last month?
It is our understanding that this is not part of the Kylie Ranch bankruptcy. This property is owned by CAV Investments and not the, and not the Kylie's.
Yeah, we know that for a fact. There's no involvement with Kylie Ranch here at all with this property? No ties anywhere at all to Kylie Ranch?
Our research showed that not to be the case.
Okay. All right, can we get, I guess the applicant's going to get a chance, can we get it on record that there is no ties at all to this, to the Kylie, Kylie Ranch, or any of their bankruptcy, or any, anything else?
Yeah, we'll have the applicant set next.
Thanks.
The, this is what we have, Councilman Schmidt, for the owner affidavit. This is off the Secretary of State's website. Zozak Land Company.
I understand it, Tim. I know it's in the package, you know, and it looks like in November, this corporation was formed, you know, well after the package was submitted to staff. But on October 4th, there was a hearing from Kylie Ranch on their bankruptcy, in which I believe this piece of property was mentioned, but I'm just, you know, I'm going over, because, you know, we have, we have a vested interest in that case. And so we need to verify that anything we're doing is 100% ownership. And I guess the easiest way to do that is to take the partial number, look at Washoe County, and see who's the recorded owner of the property.
Right. And I'm sure Mr. Vasquez can help-
Appreciate it.
...address your question.
Thank you.
Any, quite any other questions for Tim? Mr. Vasquez, or the applicant? Any comments for the good?
No, no comments for the good. I'd like to address Mr. Schmidt's concerns.
Please, please.
I bought this property back in January through CAV Investments. I conveyed it in November to Zozak, which would be our development entity for this. There is no tie to Kylie Ranch. There has been a tie to Kylie Ranch in terms of the handbook. It's in the PUD, but there is no legal tie. We bought this in January and then conveyed it into our other entity in November. So I'm concerned about your issue.
I just, I just want to make sure that there's no tie, notes back and forth, anything at all, that once that bankruptcy starts, you know, fine-tuning, that another thing comes back to the city. Because we have two claims in that bankruptcy, and I want to make sure that our claims are protected.
I also have two claims in that bankruptcy. I have $11.5 million worth of claims in that bankruptcy. There is no tie here. Were there a tie, I'd be curious how that would affect the city. But there is no tie. There has been no tie. We bought and purchased it for cash, and then I conveyed it to another entity for development.
Okay. It's all on, it's on record. Thanks.
It is on the record.
Thanks, Mr. Vasquez. And anything else you would like to add to Mr. Thompson's presentation?
No, we agree with staff, and I did want to say that, you know, this has been, through this process with our project, we've had a great deal of cooperation with staff. And it's been a long time since we worked hand in hand, and it was great. I mean, we were, I can't say enough about the staff and how they worked with us to bring this project through. It's a tough economy, and we've had to do some unique things to make this pencil. And we, they were like a partner through the project.
Good. Good to hear. Okay, any, anything else? Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the tentative map associated with PCN 10023, adopting findings T1 through T12, and the facts supporting these findings, and also subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 16 as listed in the report.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve Agenda Item 8.2, PCN 10023. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Congratulations, boys. It's good to have something moving forward somewhere.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Okay, 8.3 is a public hearing, consideration and possible action on an appeal regarding the Planning Commission's action to approve PCN 10017, a special use permit request. Mr.-
Mayor Martini.
Yes.
We have a rather unique situation in that the gentleman who filed the appeal is not here.
So can we, can we just turn this down, or not?
I think we need some advice from our city attorney.
Do we, do we need to close? Do we need to take a recess so we can sit down and discuss this, Neil?
No, you can certainly, you can certainly consider it, along with whatever comments or written documentation that the applicant has provided, but simply because he's not here, I don't know if you want to just go ahead and deny it. This is a public hearing.
Yeah, still have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, so go ahead and let staff put on its, its evidence, and if it's not rebutted or otherwise contest by the applicant, or during the public- or otherwise contest by the applicant or during the public hearing, I think the City Council is free to consider the matter with that in mind.
Okay, so, we're going to proceed like Mr. Young was here, and I'm hoping this will be a brief discussion. And then, we have questions. Mr. Carrigan?
Well, the only question I had was to the person that was denying it, because I couldn't understand his 17 pages of, that he sent to the City Council. I don't need to hear staff. I mean, make it quick if you're going to do it.
Yeah, we do have the report in the, we have your presentation in the, in the presentation and the items.
Yeah, and it hasn't changed since the last time we saw this, a couple of years ago, has it? I mean, the scale of it has, but I think all of us are pretty aware of it.
Okay. Let's take some more questions, and then we'll move on. Mr. Smith?
Same thing. We've seen the presentation. You've addressed all of the concerns in Mr. Young's appeal. I don't need to hear a presentation.
You know, I, well, let's, go ahead, Mr. Lawson, go ahead.
I have to disclose that prior to the consideration of this agenda item, I'm required by law to make the following disclosure, that I'm employed by YESCO, and Olympia Gaming is a client of YESCO. Although I believe I'm able to faithfully discharge my duties as Sparks City Councilman, I'm concerned that these circumstances might rise to the level of a commitment in a private capacity to interests of others. And as that term is defined in Nevada law accordingly, I will be abstaining from this matter pursuant to NRS 281A.420.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Just to be clear here, we...
Some of us know that by heart.
Yeah, exactly. As I recall, yours is a little longer, though. It was about three books' worth. You know, so, we would feel more comfortable, just if you could make a statement in public that you reviewed all of the things that Mr. Young put forward, and in your opinion, we have answered all the questions and faithfully done what we needed to do here. So, there's no questions later on down the road.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record. At this Planning Commission meeting, staff did go through the materials in the staff report, so you have all of the materials that were presented that evening. With respect to Mr. Young's letter, there were 24 or so items. Most of those items appeared to be Mr. Young's opinions, and there were several items that were in response to the TOD area plan. And in fact, the TOD area plan or the TOD manuals do not apply in this particular case because the zoning is NUD, New Urban Development, New Urban District. The Plan Development Handbook still prevails, and the zoning is not TOD, and therefore, the manuals do not apply. Otherwise, staff believes that we have addressed adequately any and all concerns that Mr. Young brought up in his appeal letter, both in the staff report and at the Planning Commission meeting itself. And I will conclude my presentation.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public like to speak to this particular agenda item? Mr. Rayly? Nice haircut, by the way.
For the record, Mike Rayly with Rubicon Design Group, here on behalf of Olympia Gaming. I had a presentation prepared, but we'll spare you the details, so we're here to answer any questions that Mike can have.
Questions for Mike? Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the special use permit associated with PCN 10017 to allow a non-restricted gaming operation and a hotel with more than 150 rooms, 800-room resort, hotel, casino, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 30 as listed in the staff report.
Do you have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to deny the appeal. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 4, nothing with one abstention. Congratulations, gentlemen. Let's move on with the project. You know, we went through the process. Unfortunately, it was one that, obviously, we didn't have to do, but we apologize for that, but we had to do what we had to do, so... Okay, do we need a closed-door session, Mr. Carrigan? No, okay. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, if we just, if the city attorney could, is there, what's our ramifications now? Can this be, is there anything at all that allowed this to come back, or is this over with?
Can you appeal the appeal, Chad?
Take it to district court.
Yeah, still take it to district court, yeah, yeah.
Yes, he probably could. However, by not being here tonight, he's waived several objections and is pretty much relegated to what was before the City Council tonight.
Was there any specific notice that we were entitled to give him on this, that makes sure we're covered on this thing? Is there?
We have.
All the notices have been given?
In my opinion, we have. Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, comments from the council and city manager? No comments, eh? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a wonderful day coming up on Thursday, which we give thanks to all the good things in life, and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and don't eat too much and don't watch too much football.
Eat a lot and watch a lot of football. Mr. Smith?
I'd just like to take just a minute and congratulate Councilwoman Ratty. She was just hired as the exec, the CEO of the Girl Scouts of Western, Sierra Nevada, something like that. Anyway, congratulations.
Congratulations.
She's been in that capacity for a while, interim.
I know there was a very large group that wanted to sign up for that, too, wasn't there? Okay, any further business? Seeing no further business, we're adjourned.